My Reverend John Duncan, Pastor Bethlehem Lutheran Church and Senior Chaplain of Hickory Fire Department.
Good evening, thank you. A quotation from the sixth chapter of Micah. "God has told you what is good for you, O mortal, to love mercy, do kindness, and walk humbly with the Lord your God." Let us pray. God of Abraham and Jacob and Isaac, we come before you tonight knowing what you have instructed us. We ask that this great leadership body, these leaders tonight, would do exactly as you have instructed us because we, whether we are Jewish or Christian or Islamic, we all hold the Bible as holy scripture, the Old Testament at least. So we pray that you would lead us, lead these elected leaders, all these officials here tonight, to love mercy, to do justice, and to walk humbly with you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Because Alderwoman Fox will be officially retiring in a few minutes, we're going to do the second reading because she voted on these at the last meeting. Do you have a motion to reaffirm and ratify on second reading?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. And now our City Clerk Debbie Miller is going to administer the oath of office to Wright, Gess, Patton, and Zaggaroli. And we're not going to make you sit through it for another minute. Mr. Gess's mother and wife and son are here. And Mr. Zaggaroli's wife is here, Miss Patton's mother and daughter and granddaughter, okay. So we have a good turnout.
Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. I state your name.
Louie Wright.
Do solemnly swear that I will support uphold and defend the constitutions and laws of the United States of America that I will support uphold and defend the constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina not inconsistent therewith that I will observe and obey the laws and ordinances of the city of Hickory, North Carolina, and that I will faithfully perform and discharge the duties incumbent upon me as mayor and alderman and alderwoman of the city of Hickory, North Carolina, fairly and honestly and to the best of my skill and ability, so help me God. Congratulations.
Okay, we're going to recognize Mrs. Fox. Don't move too far, Mrs. Fox there. But first, I want to make a motion that Dave Zaggaroli be named the new rookie.
I second that.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. And I want to recognize Hank Gess who has served so capably in that job. Okay. Mr. Berry? Is it your turn?
Well, we got recognition of retiring council member. And I think you actually did the PowerPoint for this, so...
Well, no, no, no. Mr. Addison and Mrs. Pitts and Mrs. Kaminsky did it. But don't we have the rocking chair?
We do. You want to do that now?
If you will, if you'll give Mrs. Fox the rocking chair. I think it will help her to sit in the chair while she is seeing the honors that we are bestowing. Yeah, the recognition. Wait a minute, before you do that, I don't know where Mr. Zaggaroli's name tag is. That rocking chair has her name and the city seal in it, right? On it, right? And that's been a tradition here. How many of those have we given over the years?
Dozens, right?
Well, we're very proud of those rocking chairs well crafted. Mr. Addison Fox?
Mayor, council member, this is maybe one of the last times, maybe in front of y'all. I wanted to take my time to thank you for opportunity. If we could, Danny, Bruce, Travis, trying to stay awake during the session. I may be a little boring. Mayor Hank, don't interrupt me. Jill? Sit up a little bit, I'm good. And look, I will be longer than three minutes. When Rudy asked me to speak for my mom, you know, I was, one, I'm a little nervous about it. You know, because sometimes I get a little emotional, but if we can go ahead, first slide. In the first pictures, this really symbolizes what mom is all about. Speaking in front of people, planting trees, planting growth, planning for the future, as you see, looking over the mats with Rudy and Bruce. But this is what being a council was all about. And notice only one of those pictures is inside. You know, getting out in the community, being, serving is something I've charged Dave Zaggaroli with, to make sure you're out doing stuff.
Got it.
Sitting behind there is my new part of the job. And what a lot of people don't understand is, you know, from a family member, you know, you're sacrificing a lot. Twenty years of missing opportunities for your mom, but she was always there. But also, one other thing this picture shows, as you can see, is the progression of my mom's hair color as well. If we go on to the next slide.
She has hair, Addison.
This picture really represents, I think, a lot from my mom. This picture was taken at Carolina Park. And mom, if you remember, this is where it all started, when you go to a major announcement. But the tree, you know, growth. Mom's always one of the plant seeds, and that's always what she's done. And a lot of stuff that she's talked about, you know, twenty years ago, seems to be new ideas for people nowadays. But this is, this really symbolizes, you know, but being open space. And everybody knows how mom feels about open space. She loves, absolutely loves, open space. So when we were thinking about, when the city came to us and said, "What do you want to, you know, we want something named after you or maybe an idea." I was like, "Well, she works downtown." And there's, you know, there's only one true space, open space, that really symbolizes what mom stands for. And I think we've hit the nail on the head, so we're dedicating this. There it is, mom. That is the most open space that you can get. Of course, you park there every day, they have a bronze plaque in the corner parking lot where you always park the Expedition. And the name, we can change the color if you don't like the color, but that was the rendering that I did today. I thought that would be a good one for you to see. But honestly, we are, one other thing that we are, that's a joke. One other thing that we are, that the city we came to is something that mom believes in, and I think my son and her grandson, I don't know why, we had one of these in our backyard. And I was always told to go pick mine when I was bad. But a weeping willow. It's a good picture switch. So Griffin has an old tree. And also, that's on the beaches of Lake Hickory, as you see. That's a joke too. But mom, they're planting a tree in your honor at Ivy Arboretum. And which will now be referred to as
Sally Fox.
Sally Fox Park.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we call for immediate public hearing, or at the earliest date possible, to name the Carolina Park, Saddle Clot's Park.
Motion by Mr. Layle, second by Mr. Seaver. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That's unanimous. All council members are present. Well, I would just like to say how much I appreciate Mrs. Fox's service and friendship. We've always gone to the same church, but we didn't know each other real well through that. I think Addison, you finished about the same time my son did at high school. So we had some connections there. And but I got to know her pretty well on council, and I've got her cellphone memorized. I'm sure she has mine memorized. And and I'm sure I will hear from her. And I hope so. But I do appreciate what you've stood for and Sally has not always won every battle she's fought, just like the rest of us. But she has taken any, she's taken her victories with humility and her defeats with grace, which is what I hope I can learn to do. And way to go. Thank you, it's been a pleasure working with you. Well, I think we've got some other people who want to say some of these things.
I'd like to just say, in my, in the past 20 years, it's just been a complete honor. And I have to admit, for the first few years, a word rings out of my mind, and it's probably frustration. And I'm sure I frustrated you more than you frustrated me. But let me tell you, in the last years, there's been a lot of caring and concern, and a good instance of that, Alderman Gess and I got to teach an honor civics class at St. Stevens, two of them, last week. And we were, and if you, council members, remember, they were all in attendance at the last meeting, and we had a public hearing. And one of the students said, "Well, who spoke up in negative against the public hearing?" And I said, "Don't say that." I said, "Sally is the only one that cares." She knows that if we zone that highway commercial, and God forbid something happened to the owner between the times they buy it, and, you know, they could, something adverse could go adjacent to the residential area. So that's a misunderstanding, because she cares, and that's why she mentioned that. It's not, she's against that. It's her concern and care for Hickory. And I respect you and you know, I love you forever.
I'd like to say something. I think we first met when I was on the police department. And it just so happened that my area of main concern, my pack, was in northwest Hickory, where Ms. Fox was the councilwoman. And from the very first time I met her, I could tell that she was a tremendous leader in our community. And I just want to say that I appreciate the example that she represented, not just for the city of Hickory, but as an individual. For those of you that know her and have known her for a long time, you know that she's not one person here and another person out in the community, or another person personally. And I just want to say that I appreciate the example that she's set for me over the years. And I look forward to many, many more years of her leadership and some other capacity within the city. And I appreciate everything you've done for me, Sally.
I would like to say, Sally, I got to know you outside the chambers of city council, for sure. And developed a friendship through common friends and through common threads. And then had the good fortune to serve with you on city council. From day one, you were a mentor to me. But you know what? Hickory, you poured your heart and soul into your service on city council. But underneath all of that, you still were Sally. And and I got to know you as Sally, and became friends with you that way. So regardless if we agreed or disagreed on a particular issue there, I knew I always had my friend Sally. And that made me feel so good. Thanks, Sally.
I'd like to say, Sally, I have thoroughly enjoyed sitting next to each other and the kicks back and forth, and the notes back and forth.
We've noticed that.
All kinds of stuff. It has been just a real pleasure, and I appreciate your mentoring me and helping guide me in how to do things, and I appreciate your honesty and your wisdom that you have been willing to share throughout my time. And I knew you before I was on council, and I appreciated everything that you've done for our community, that you have been a leader and always stuck by your conviction, and I admire you so much for that. Thank you for your help.
Sally, I'd just like to say thank you for your service to the city of Hickory. And I don't think there's any one person in this city that loves Hickory more than you.
Ms. Fox, I've had the pleasure of serving as city attorney for 20 years. And my memory goes back 20 years, when you and I were rookies. And from the very beginning, you were into tree hugging, open spaces, and neighborhoods. And a lot of times over those 20 years, you were the lone, I won't say wolf, the lone fox, raising those issues. And it's ironic that those are the issues that Hickory is behind right now, thanks to your thoughts and your dedication. And you are a class act. And I appreciate the honor of having been able to be your lawyer for 20 years. And I have so much respect for you and your positions. And you're one of the few people that refuse to do anything but stand up for your constituents and do what you think is right. And I applaud you for that. And Hickory will miss you, but I know you'll be around. And it's just been an honor to know you.
It's your turn.
Well, I've reflected a lot. And this is not about trees, and it's not about the environment. And it's not about me. It's about the unsung heroes I have had the opportunity to meet and work with as a council representative. Soft-spoken Lorraine Mull and Marty Espe, who took an ice cream social and turned it into the Kenworth Neighborhood Association. Ray and Linda McCurdy, who put together the Kenworth Cookbook. Dean Patterson, who worked tirelessly for Ridgeview. Josephine James, who had perfect attendance on the first Community Appearance Commission. Sean and Mark Huggins, Juanita Reed, Maxine Hovis, who at 80 made cookies for all the Greenport neighborhood meetings. The late Edith Petit, Frances Johnson, the Frye family, and hard-working Martha Thomas, who led the group when citing the public art piece at a gateway in their neighborhood. Jennifer Hilton, who helped form the Clermont Group, and went on to serve on Community Appearance. These are citizens who love Hickory, and along with many, many others, work hard with little attention to make our community great. I cite these citizens because in some sense, they believe in a quote by Richard Moe, Director of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. "You can get the kind of community you get, or you can get the kind of community you want." This should be a lesson for all of us. We must continue to build relationships. We must be better about understanding each other. We must continue conversations, regardless of race, political persuasion, or station in life. To re-energize our community, we start with every citizen. Each has a gift to offer, as these unsung heroes have exemplified. This is the lesson I have learned from my service on council. I met many, many citizens who had an idea, believed in Hickory, rolled up their sleeves and went to work in their own quiet way. What a great example they have set for us. And I am so fortunate that I have had the opportunity to experience this. We developed relationships and friendships that will always warm my heart. Let us endeavor to be more like these citizens. Let us be challenged to build more relationships and friendships. It is up to all of us to work in concert for the greater good of Hickory. Love and peace to all.
You know, the one goal that I think every council person tries to attain, and it's setting it up in just a phrase, Hickory is a better place because of Sally Fox.
Amen. You know, a lot of us want Sally to continue, much as we like Zaggaroli, we're gonna have fun with Zaggaroli. But we do like having David. He brings a nice, nice viewpoint, viewpoints, multiple, to this council. So Sally said, and she told me this time, and I guess Rudy picked your time, you know, you go out when the time's right. And she just felt like the time was right. I just want everyone to understand, we were trying to talk her into staying. But but I've gotten a lot of good advice from Sally, sometimes requested. But always good advice, Sally. And I will continue to get that, as long as I don't change my cellphone. So I look forward to it. Anybody else? With that, we have, I'd like to change the order of people having signed up here, if I may. And I'd like to start with Meg Jenkins-Lott, who would like to talk a tribute, present a tribute to Councilwoman Sally Fox.
Well, I said I wasn't going to do it, but I might. Mayor, right members of council, Mr. Berry and Mr. Crone, we have a long history together, as do almost all of the citizens that were at the earlier reception. And for those of us that were there, I humbly represent the thousands of citizens that you have mentored and created these relationships with. Without you, I don't know where we'd be. We are going to get the community we deserve, because you're not going anywhere. This is not a death, this is the beginning. Mrs. Zaggaroli?
Yes.
Big shoes to fill. Use her wisdom. All of you still seek this. Bruce, your words were so meaningful. We've been through a lot, all of us, that have been here for over 20 years. But on behalf of the citizens, the ragtag group of citizen soldiers that we like to call ourselves, that many of you are and were, and those to come, I wanted to give you this gift. I want you to open it. But I kind of started, because I'm not one of those people that likes to wait. As soon as it's out, those seeds. I don't know if y'all have ever noticed, Sally wears jewelry. Has sometimes some things around. So this is a tree of life, or a tree that represents all of those seeds that she has built, and those to come. And we love you.
Next, requesting to be heard, reverting back to the original order, Larry Pope.
Mayor, City Council, Mr. Berry, and Attorney Crone, thank you for giving me an opportunity to be heard. I know that tonight is a celebration for someone who has served this city for 20 years in a very up and outstanding manner. Over the last 20 years, I can remember when I called Councilmember Fox about issues. And she would say to me, "Come by, let's sit down and talk about it." So she always opened the doors to her house to meet and talk with citizens, and I appreciate that. That is the type of council member that we need, who is willing to sit and listen. May not always agree, but at least she was always willing to listen and talk about whatever issue that I brought to her. I will say to the rest of this council members is that our city started out with a city charter that allowed the citizens of our city to select their city council members according to the ward in which they lived. That was taken away from citizens of our city by a resolution that was passed by a former city council in the city of Hickory. We have asked that you, as a council, go back to ward elections, because it truly gives the citizens a choice of who represents them. Overwhelmingly, Mrs. Wright, that ran for Ward Four, won Ward Four by double to the number of voters from Ward Four in the primary, but what we knew that once it went to the general election, she would not be elected. Because the citizens in northwest, northeast Hickory had already made up their mind and had been told who to vote for. And we felt, as citizens of Ward Four, that that dilated our choice and our vote. And we felt, as citizens of Ward Four, that that dilated our choice and our vote. So you have the power to go back to what it used to be by ward elections, or do we spend citizens' money
Three minutes.
...to represent the city in a lawsuit that will eventually come up in the federal court because of the way that you have elections designed to take away the vote of a particular ward and make it at large. So I would ask of you to do the right thing and give citizens a choice to select who represents them and not who you want to represent them. You want to maintain the power, you want to maintain the choice, but it's not the choice that residents of Ward Four made. Thank you.
There are some people here who are not party, perhaps, to all of that discussion. By legal process, a former council decided that, or passed an ordinance, that we would elect our representatives at large after nomination from the ward in which they lived. To give you an example, every person who sits at this table represents you directly. You can vote for them, you can vote against them. That's the way I want it to be. I'm just speaking, it's just my personal opinion, that's the way I want it to be. And I think if I only had one person up here representing me that I could vote for and the other people could not, I would feel that my voting rights had been abridged. So that's the other side of that story. Mr. Crosby.
Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, council members, I'll make this real quick. I'm coming to you tonight telling a couple of concerns that I have for the city, and number one is I would like to know the process, or maybe this is the process, of how we could think about getting Third Avenue Drive Northwest, known as the Old Lenore Highway, speed limit reduced. We're at 45 miles an hour now, and I would say most people are going 50, 55 through that area. And maybe if we could get it reduced to 35, maybe we could slow traffic down to 45. So that was one thing I'd like to bring up. And another one, as I know in a couple of months from now, y'all will be addressing and having people come for you about monies for different projects. Probably some of the most boring meetings I've ever been in my life, and so I congratulate y'all for listening to that and having an open mind as to what the requests are. But I would like to see that request made a little bit differently to some of the projects that go on when they, when different groups request monies for their project, that maybe some of those could be tied back into the money that they're requesting to make sure it's spent to businesses in Hickory. After all, it's taxpayers' money, and maybe it could go back to some of the businesses in Hickory, and I would like you to consider that. And the last thing I had on my list, and I did not know that Sally, that was her last night, but Sally, I personally want to thank you for everything that you've done for this city. You've done a lot for it, we've had some discussions, and we don't always agree on everything, but I've always respected you over the last 20 years for what you did for the city, and I just want to thank you for that. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. That's a DOT road, right? Old Lenore Road?
We have a traffic calming process, and we have a way of evaluating the road, and we'll go through that process.
There's no sidewalks along there either, and it makes it pretty hard. You get somewhere up around Hickory Tree, and those roads are people trying to get out there, and it's just a hard road. It's not, surprised we haven't had somebody interrupt, and we even have some other people that, anyway, that's what I would like to, thank you.
Can we look at that and report back in a, what would be a reasonable time?
Well, usually we do a traffic study, take counts, et cetera, so we'll just go through our normal process, we do lots of these.
But I mean, this one, since Mr. Crosby brought it up, I think it'd be good to address it here at the council meeting. Is that okay? Or address it directly to Mr. Crosby, one or the other. And the second one, that's a little trickier, I think, because I suspect most of the people who get those monies are spending some of it locally and some of it is not local, sometimes because it's for things or services that have to be obtained elsewhere, but I would like first to look at that. Okay. Thank you all for your comments. Next, we turn to election of a Mayor Pro Tem for 2014, and I'd like to nominate Mrs. Patton.
Second.
Motion by Wright, second by Lale. All in favor, please, are there any other nominations? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. The motion's carried. Do we have a motion, do we have a nomination for City Attorney?
I'd like a motion that we keep our 20-year City Attorney, Mr. John Crone.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guest, second by Ms. Patton. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Look forward to working with you, Mrs. Patton, and with you, Mr. Crone. And I want to say truthfully, I joked about the rookie thing, but Hank Guest has been absolutely the best Mayor Pro Tem there's ever been, anytime, anywhere. Okay?
He's retired.
He's even shown up for things that weren't even scheduled. Where's Hank? He's out there somewhere. He has done a wonderful job, and we're gonna use him as an unofficial Mayor Pro Tem Pro Tem. That means when the Mayor Pro Tem is not there, the Mayor Pro Tem Pro Tem will get the call. We have a motion to approve, well, we should have had Mrs. Fox approve the minutes. Mr. Zagoroli, you can't vote on this one. Approval of the minutes of November 19th.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guest, second by Ms. Patton. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. It's unanimous, Mr. Zagoroli didn't vote.
Mayor, I think the Mayor Pro Tem and I need to be sworn in quickly.
Okay. Let's do that. No, you do it, you're great. You're the winner, great, yeah.
I state your name.
I, John Crone.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support
Support and uphold.
Uphold and defend
Uphold and defend.
The constitutions and laws
Constitutions and laws.
Of the United States of America
The United States of America.
That I will support
Support and uphold.
Uphold and defend
Uphold and defend.
The Constitution
Constitution.
And laws of the state of North Carolina
Laws of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith
Not inconsistent therewith.
That I will observe
That I will observe.
And obey the laws
And obey the laws.
And ordinances
And ordinances.
Of the city of Hickory
City of Hickory.
North Carolina
North Carolina.
And that I will faithfully
And I will faithfully.
Perform and discharge
Perform and discharge.
The duties incumbent
Duties incumbent.
Upon me as City Attorney
Upon me as City Attorney.
And Mayor Pro Tem
Mayor Pro Tem.
Of the city of Hickory
City of Hickory.
North Carolina
North Carolina.
Fairly and honestly
Fairly and honestly.
And to the best of my skill
And to the best of my skill.
And ability
And ability.
So help me God.
I've been marking up my agenda too much, and I've kinda got off track here, but we're gonna get back on track, thanks to Mr. Lale and Mr. Meisner. We have a couple of scouts, could we ask them to introduce themselves, what troop they're from?
I'm Dave, I'm from Troop 238.
Who sponsors Troop 238?
I think it's Mr. Rockmorden.
Which church?
Good Zion Lutheran Church.
Okay. And in the back?
I'm from Shakatah, and our church is not Zion, but I hang on there.
Any other scouts? Okay. Now I'd like to call on Mr. Steve Bowman for representing the Community Apairance Commission with the 2013 Beautification Award.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members, it's my privilege and honor to be here tonight, and as Chairman of the Community Apairances Commission, I have the distinct honor of presenting the Commission's 2013 Beautification Awards. And as I call, we have different categories, and as I call the individual or business's name, I'd ask you to come forward, and we have a presentation certificate for you. We're gonna go through the, you ready, council? Okay. The first award is a residential landscape award, and is presented to James and Phyllis McBride at 1704 30th Avenue Northeast. Brother McBride's here. And next, we have a non-residential landscape award, which is presented to Z Loop at 816 13th Street Northeast. Is there anyone here from Z Loop? No? Okay, thank you. The next award is for non-residential renovation and/or restoration, and we have three recipients tonight. The first goes to the Old Hickory Station at 232 Government Avenue Southwest, Old Hickory OHB Properties LLC. Is there anyone here tonight?
Oh, he was here earlier.
Okay. I think I have a slide for that?
Yes.
Yeah, let's let everybody see what we have. Before and after. The next is the Deason Taylor Building at 234 Union Square, Tim Klein Properties LLC. Anyone here for that? That is outstanding right there. The next is Simmons Hosery Mill, 391 10th Avenue Drive Northeast, Bruce and Melissa McNeely. Melissa McNeely's here. And the last is the Adelaide Schuford Award, which is for the outstanding adopter spot. Dr. Bob and Candy Peterson have the responsibility for caring for the Arrowhead over at Third Avenue Northeast and Third Street. Oh, the Petersons here. I know they worked a little here. Congratulations, Candy, I know you did all the work. Congratulations to you, buddy. We'd like to ask everyone who was here tonight to step back and holler a little bit, we'd like to take photos. Oh, we do? Uh-oh. Oh, yeah, thank you. And we have a special award, two recipients, the Boy Scout Cabin, the Hickory Landmark Society, Hickory Parks and Recreation Department. Is anyone here for that?
Here.
No, okay, great. Congratulate. And the next is the Fly Award, Reflection Garden at Macomb Park, St. Aloysius Catholic Thank you very much.
Mrs. Fox, weren't you on that first Community Apairance Commission, too? Okay. Anything to be removed from the consent agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Mr. Guest, second by Mr. Seaver. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Okay, no public hearings, we go straight to departmental reviews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First department report staff would like to make to council this evening is to provide an update to council on inspiring spaces, and I'm gonna kinda start that. As a matter of fact, I need a little clicker for the slide presentation there. You know, the term inspiring spaces is kind of catchy, and so people are using it quite a bit, and that's great, but I felt like we needed to put that specific initiative, which Ms. Surratt's gonna provide you a detailed update on in just a moment, but we needed to put it in the context of really the broader initiative that that's a component of. We've gotta rewind about a year and a half ago, the business community, local governments, the higher education community with LR and CBCC, the county, Hickory as the local governments, came together about a year and a half ago and enlisted the services of a gentleman named Ted Abernathy, who is with the Southern Growth Policies Board. And interestingly, now Ted is doing strategic planning for the North Carolina Department of Commerce, so it's nice that we have this connection now with him through his work in commerce, and he's very familiar with Hickory and Catawba County. But the outcome ultimately of that good work that was done over the course of about 18 months and involved a lot of citizens in the community, was the Innovate Catawba Plan. And that plan has six areas of focus, and they are represented by the icons there, inspiring, reinventing, building, entrepreneurs, workforce, and leading. And a couple of months ago, we had Stephen Schuford, who's the president of Sure Tape Technologies, come and make a presentation to city council and share with you all the work that his committee is doing on reinventing, and of course, the city of Hickory has really taken the initiative in that even prior to this study being completed with Project No Vacancy, and again, Ms. Fox being one of the instrumental spearheads in that initiative, and that now is growing and being added to to help reinvent spaces. But I also wanted to spend a little bit of time this evening talking about the building initiative, and specifically, the city of Hickory's efforts on that one. I might forget how to turn that, but before I do that, I wanted to share with you the advertisement that just went out today in the North Carolina Business Publication for Economic Development, and so this is actually a guide publication that's published once a year that businesses can turn to to find various resources for economic development, site selection, et cetera. And this advertisement that you see is on the back page of that publication, and I believe you have in front of you, we distributed each of you all this evening, the full publication, so we're really proud of that. And I'm gonna talk specifically about some of the projects, and one of the projects that's actually listed on there, I'm gonna touch on in just a second. And again, the whole idea is we've got to help the community broaden the conversation about inspiring spaces, because it really is a multifaceted approach to improving our overall community. So let's talk a little bit about building. The Multi Jurisdictional Business Park is a very innovative project, one of only two that we're familiar with in the entire state of North Carolina, something that even the General Assembly with Speaker Tillis has been very proud of to talk about, because his community, before he went to Raleigh, was the first one to start, basically coming together of local governments to help spur economic development. So this is actually located in the city of Conover. It is specifically targeted toward data campus and data centers. The city of Hickory, you all by contract are a 19% ownership partner The city of Hickory, you all by contract are a 19% ownership partner in that. The partnership is Catawba County, Conover, Maiden, and the town of Catawba. And where this project sits currently is that a solar field has been developed in the adjacent parcel. The sale of that property helped free up some money that is now being coupled with a loan from NC Commerce to build infrastructure to the site. It's approximately 50 acres, and right now, final design and permitting are being done for the infrastructure, and that's primarily a bridge. Secondly, and this has been in the city of Hickory's portfolio for a number of years, is the Fair Grove Business Park, and this sits, I still like to refer to it as Behind the Del Jarrett Operation, so at the intersection of Fair Grove Church Road and Highway 70. About three years ago, the city entered into an option arrangement with Sutter Street, better known as Williams-Sonoma, to actually take down the majority of this property, approximately 50 acres, it sits right here, and develop it as a brand-new, state-of-the-art facility. As it turned out, Sutter Street, Williams-Sonoma moved into an existing facility in Clermont. Over time, they found that to be adequate for their needs, and they've renovated it. And so the option that the city had entered into to do an economic development project on this property has since lapsed and is now back available for development. In the newspaper yesterday, or actually this morning, it happened yesterday at the Clermont Council Meeting, but the city of Clermont and Catawba County announced a public-private partnership that they have entered into, those two local governments, with a private company to build a shell building, a facility at an existing business park in Clermont. This is a specific goal of Innovate Catawba. City staff, in terms of city of Hickory staff, has been bird-dogging the project throughout and paying attention to how it's been developed and how the contracts have come together. The mayor and I received just today a very detailed briefing from economic development officials on how that got put together. And so that might be something that we should look at for the property here. Again, it's a tool that could potentially be in our tool chest, and something that we can look at and consider and evaluate as we move forward and look at opportunities for economic development and job growth in the Fair Grove Business Park. And please feel free to stop me or chime in as I go along, I don't mean to rush through it. Next is the Grace Chapel Property. This to kind of orient you, that, of course, is a finger of Lake Hickory. This is MDI's facility in Caldwell County, Highway 321. DOT, with participation from Caldwell County and the city of Hickory, is in the process of building this road. And so what you see here is acreage that is owned by you all, by Hickory City Council. It was originally part of the original MDI project that was not needed for MDI at that time. And as you can see from this schematic, it creates the opportunity for a number of different-sized plants and facilities. Now, this particular piece of property obviously has to have the road built to it, and also has some needs for infrastructure, water and sewer development as well, so it is in the pipeline in terms of future opportunities. And then lastly, is a project that we've titled Park 1764. And this is a Type A class business park, really a marquee, long-term opportunity for the city. It is much more than a concept, but at this point, it is still in the process of being put together in terms of conversations with private real estate and property owners, and negotiations are in process there to assemble the various pieces of property that would go into making up Park 1764. So again, I wanted to put Ms. Surratt's presentation in the broader context of Innovate Catawba, of the multifaceted approach that the community, and the city of Hickory being a key component of that, is embarking on to really improve our overall economy, to be attractive to the key demographic of 20 to 40-year-olds. And as we move forward, our intention as staff is to continually give city council updates, and of course, we'll be bringing specific projects to you all in various junctures for approval, et cetera. But just as we had Stephen Schuferd come and update you on reinventing spaces, and I've just done a brief update on the city of Hickory's portfolio specifically as it relates to buildings and economic development opportunities, and now Ms. Surratt will talk about Inspiring. We want to keep that in front of you all, keep that in front of the community, because a lot of hard work is going on behind the scenes, and we're just a piece of that. There are lots of different committees with lots of different individuals involved on it that are moving forward, and not just in Hickory, but in the various towns and throughout Catawba County. So I'll be happy to answer any questions on that specific piece, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Surratt to give you an updated insight into the Inspiring Spaces Initiative. Okay? Ms. Surratt?
Yeah. Thank you. I'll just continue right on. The project tonight that we'll just give you a quick update on is Inspiring Spaces, and we want to be sure that you look backwards at the work that's been done and then look forwards to the work ahead. This is a large project, and it covers a lot of ground in our public areas of the city. And so just as a way to summarize public involvement that we've, the city has experienced over the last year, year and a half, I mean, we started out with some stakeholder interviews last, a little later than this time last year. Community input meetings followed that, and we had, you can see there, a number of joint advisory committee meetings, meetings with college students. Land Design has been here and presenting, and then had hosted an open house in April, and then that work was then continued, and then we had a steering committee meeting in July, and then that work is still continuing, and that's design work that requires a number of iterations back and forth. And so what I want to share with you tonight is how the list of projects is shaping up and sort of where we are in the process. So as you recall, this is the composite map, that map includes, it's on our website, it includes roughly 48 to 50 proposed projects for all areas of Hickory related to gateways, special places, greenways, parks, and streetscapes. And so we covered the full range there, and I'll come back to this map and refer to a few specific projects. So the timeline that we've been following, we're moving into Phase Four, which is the development of a budget and a timeline for construction. And so the projects are in conceptual stages, and for the most part, and there are three or four projects that Land Design is working in a more detailed fashion on, but as we move into Phase Four, then we'll have the estimates of probable cost for a few of those projects, and that's what we'll be bringing back to you in the next month or two with a final report and recommendation. So let me just share with you some projects now that have trickled to the top, and really, what this list represents is, first of all, projects are not in any certain order, so even though we had to put them in order, they're not in order. So what they represent, though, are projects that the Inspiring Spaces Steering Committee felt like were worthy of taking a closer look and doing a little more work on. I want to show you that the list continues on the second page, and we'll go to those as well, but I'm coming back hopefully to the first page. And I'll just go through these briefly with you, just to, and the columns there represent a way of thinking about projects in terms of phasing. We would love to do everything right away, or maybe each one of us has a specific project that we like and would love for that to be the first one. Well, the way to organize this most effectively was just to say, well, what projects are early successes? Maybe we have the land that we need to develop, maybe we have, maybe the project doesn't cost very much, or maybe it's just such an important project that it needs to have some pre-planning done right away. So that's what the first column is. The second column, you know, sort of a middle-ground, second phase, definitely they're worth doing soon, but they didn't rise to the top. And the Steering Committee put the projects into these categories at their meeting in July. And the third column says projects to do as there is time and funding, and so this is more of a third phase. And if, again, all of them are important, but in effort just to get started, this is where we stand with the project. So I'm going to go through a number of projects that are specific to work going on right now. So the Lackey Project has shown up in blue. Now that we've shared with you, and Mr. Lackey's been at this meeting updating you on his work, that project is ongoing, and it weaves into what's called the Waterfront Park Project. And that project is significant. I'm going to go back to the map and point to where that is. So the Waterfront Park wraps around, it includes three parks on the east side of 321, and then it wraps potentially under the bridge and around near the baseball stadium. And so it includes not only greenways, but park space, and it includes maybe a Blue Way Trail. There's a lot to work on with that Waterfront Park concept. The whole plan has been focused on connectivity, so we have great places in Hickory, and we are trying to improve how you can get from one to the next, whether that's with a trail or with sidewalks or other ways. So that's the first project. And so that one is a large project, and so it is one that we would say pre-planning needs to be done for early, and so that one is going to take a while. All right, so then the next project is Downtown. And so the Downtown is the area that Land Design felt like, and the committee felt like, just is our core, is our hub, is our central point of focus when it comes to finding a place of entertainment, just sort of a destination. Doesn't mean that's the only place to go, but it is sort of your heartbeat, your center. And so with that, then, are there things that we can do to maximize its access to, the public's access to it, make the streets a little more inviting? And we're still waiting to see the ideas and designs for the Downtown project, but that's one that has a star. So the ones that have stars are the ones I'm covering that are being studied in more, in further detail. The next one is Splashpads, and so that's been a focus. We like water features across the city, and so the Steering Committee felt like that was one that needed to be in that first column, because they're quite, they're accessible to a number of different neighborhoods, and typically, we would have land available for those Splashpads to locate on. So that's another one being considered. The next one down is Main Avenue Improvements, and that project is one, and I'll go back to the map, that is an attempt to really bridge and connect the area that is our LR gateway in, from the interstate down LR, and then down Main Avenue and into Downtown and beyond, carrying it out further west, and maybe eventually getting up, going up Old Lenore Road into the Waterfront Park. But the Main Avenue Linear Park Concept is one where we have a rail, existing rail corridor, we have a population of students at LR, and we have just a number of, the density of residential and commercial activity in this core area is high, so the opportunity for people to use that space is then something that we wanted to focus in on. So that would be a design that allows for a multipurpose trail to run in that general direction, and so that's a project that's being worked on right now as well. And so you can see all the projects on there. Each one has a stage in which it would be considered as part of the planning process. And going to the second page of those projects, then you notice that LP France Stadium is at the bottom list of the list, but it means that it's one that we have already started working on. You worked on that last month. And so with the projects here, just because they are in the middle of the pack or at the lower end, they don't necessarily mean they are happening last. A lot of times, we need private partners to be able to make something happen, and that's what happened in this case. We had our private partner with Hickory Baseball, and the same with the Lackey Project. That potential improvement out of Guynor Park, Rotary Park would not have been as immediate had we not had that private partner. So the list is fluid, and it's subject to a lot of changes in who can help participate in those. So just to summarize and to tell you the next steps, I think we'll have a sort of an update every council meeting up into the future, and so just to give you sort of a taste of what's coming next. Second meeting in December, we should be able to give you just a glimpse at some of the conceptual, rough draft designs that are coming from Land Design, and we'll try to share this with you next time. We have a meeting scheduled with Land Design tomorrow to be updated on the Main Avenue Linear Park Concept in the Downtown area. And so that is the work happening in December. And then in 2014, starting right after the holidays, then we'll share with you some updates on what's going on for the Lackey Project out at Rotary Park. We will have some discussion in, later in January, about aquatic opportunities in several parts of town. And then the plan itself will be wrapping up. We'll meet one more time with the Steering Committee, and the work done for the final draft document will be finished, and the recommendations for the final projects that were programmed out with costs and construction information then will be presented to council. Where that takes us then is into your retreat process, because then you will have sort of the final version of this plan then to consider. And so in your retreat, then, the ever-present conversation of funding might be on your plate, and then that leads us naturally into the FY 1415 budget process. So I'm happy to answer any questions, if anybody has.
Well, I'd just like to observe that, I like the way that we are leading, I keep calling it Innovate Hickory, because I don't have a better description for it. Innovate Catawba, we know it is a, I think we had six icons, six prongs. We are fully bought into that, okay? We're into that. But we don't want to let this thing sit like some things have in the past, where we wait for buy-in from Conover, Newton, Maiden, Brookford. We want to be leading and lead them with no excuse except to be with us. A big part of that is Inspiring Spaces, but I think a very large part is going to be shell buildings for jobs and building-ready job sites, work sites, plant sites. And folks, we're talking about a, this is a pretty big undertaking. Inspiring Spaces alone, if we were to try to do all of those things, it would be a very expensive proposition. But we're probably talking as much in plants that are ready to be finalized and lots that are ready to be built on. So, and we haven't talked about much about our projects to tear down and renovate old buildings. So there are multiple prongs to this, and it's going to be expensive. And we're going to have to ask the people of Hickory to invest, and we need to go ahead and be starting on this. This month is not too soon. I appreciate that update personally, really do. Does anybody have any thoughts?
I'll just add that the, we went from the information Mr. Berry was giving us, which was very purely economic development into, you know, talking about Inspiring Spaces in terms of about inspiring spaces in terms of parks and greenways and streetscapes and those kinds of things. But I want to reiterate, and I think everybody on council knows, but I want to reiterate that that is also intended to be an economic development tool. And Mr. Berry made mention of it. I mean, it's important that we renovate our community, to begin to make it attractive to that 25 to 44-year-old. And we we bring we bring Hickory in some ways still, in a lot of areas, has the infrastructure, public infrastructure and public spaces of a town in the nineties. We bring it into the into the year 2014 and beyond. And so that, too often I think our, we tend to focus on the idea of of park with regards to the parks and recreation. And it is a quality of life issue, but most importantly, the Inspiring Spaces Initiative is an economic development issue. So I just wanted to make a final point on that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's a very good point. The worst thing that could happen, this is not what's going to happen, what's going to happen is it's going to drive tremendous progress for Hickory over the next decade. But the worst thing that could happen was everybody in Hickory would feel better about their community. That ain't too bad to have happen. And of course, if our people feel good about the community, they start talking about it, visitors catch that and it results in that economic development that Mr. Lael was talking about. I don't, I probably need to remind this group that recently, within the last eight or 10 months, a Gallup poll of the people in this metropolitan area ranked according to the definitions and parameters and interpretations set by Gallup, ranked 185th in livability out of 189 metropolitan areas. I believe Hickory would not, Hickory taken along would not have been that far down the totem pole, but I don't know that. And in any event, it doesn't really matter because we are the metropolitan area, the metropolitan area is us, and so we've got to be leading the recovery.
And to that point, I'd like to add, one of the things that Ted Abernathy with the Southern Growth Policies Board, the fellow who facilitated the Innovate Catawba work and is now with the Department of Commerce, one of his big insights was that our citizen, our our community does not know, does not tell a very good story about ourselves. We've been here and we don't and we don't, we don't tell a great story. We've lost the story of we're the furniture capital of the world. Now furniture's still important, don't anybody think that's not the case? But we, yeah, but we've lost that that story to some degree and I think that we ought to give some real serious consideration to to develop in that story. I talk to people, folks that move here from other areas, that absolutely think this is heaven on earth, heaven on earth. They love Hickory.
You look at it one.
Exactly. And 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 we need some of that positive messaging going out to our community. You know, it's been suggested to me that maybe we even do a public campaign, you know, whether it's radio spots, ads or whatever. But you know what? I'm proud to live in Hickory and the Hickory metro area. And I bet you can find a lot of other people that are willing to say that and are proud to say that. So I'm sort of like, you know, those, looking backwards is not, I've given up any hope of a of a better path for that. I'm ready, let's let's charge forward, let's remake, let's innovate and let's let's make our community the absolutely best it can be.
Okay.
Next department report, I'll ask Mr. Mac McLeod, the city's Parks and Rec Director, to present to council a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Commission related to tobacco-free parks. Mr. McLeod?
Thank you.
I'm Mayor Ryan, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, good evening. Before you tonight, it's consideration of a tobacco-free parks policy for the City of Hickory. Just a little background, there is currently, there's an initiative underway between the Catawba County Public Health Department and the North Carolina Community Transformation Grant Project. And they've come together in a unified effort that would establish tobacco-free parks in all local governments within Catawba County. And both organizations made a presentation to the Parks and Recreation Commission at their August 12th meeting. This couple, all municipalities within the county currently have smoke-free policies in place for buildings and all City of Hickory buildings have been smoke-free since 1993. For the past several years, there've also been discussions underway to establish tobacco-free grounds policies across the county also. I apologize, this may be difficult to see, but I'm going to take you through this. This is a, just basically a status report of where all the municipalities within Catawba County are in regards to tobacco-free grounds policies and ordinances. And this information is provided by the Community Transformation Project. And just very briefly going going from top to bottom, Brookford is currently implementing a tobacco-free policy. Catawba is currently not pursuing either a policy or an ordinance. Claremont at one of their meetings last month has passed tobacco-free ordinance. Conover is implementing tobacco-free grounds ordinance. The Town of Longview has not responded, as you can see, to any inquiries by the Community Transformation Project. Town of Maiden at this time does not want to pursue either a policy or an ordinance. And then the city of Newton, I understand, discussed this at a, formally at a meeting last month and their council will be taking it up formally at their meeting, their meeting next week on an ordinance. Going back to the August 13 Parks and Recreation Commission, at that meeting, the commission members had a great deal of discussion on what a tobacco-free parks policy versus a tobacco-free parks ordinance means and how that would be, how that would be enforced. So based on the discussions that the Parks and Recreation Commission had, staff came back and based on those discussions, we developed policy options for their consideration. But just want to take you through a couple of highlights of the policy. As you can see, very briefly, it defines tobacco products, meaning any product containing, made or derived from tobacco that is intended for human consumption, whether chewed, smoked, absorbed, dissolved, inhaled, snorted, sniffed or ingested by any other means or any component, part or accessory of a tobacco product. The policy also defines those prohibited areas, those being in any recreation facility owned, leased or occupied as defined by the City of Hickory and also on any recreation facility grounds that are owned, leased or occupied by the city. Policy would apply to all 23 City of Hickory parks. That policy will cover park visitors as well as employees. A great deal of emphasis in that policy will be placed on educating the public of the policy. The enforcement focus would be on a self-initiated versus a staff-initiated compliance, self-compliance versus staff, staff-initiated compliance. And that policy, if approved, will become effective January 1st. Going back to the to the October 8th meeting, the Parks and Recreation Commission considered and discussed in detail two two policy options. Those, the first option that was presented to the commission would prohibit the the use of tobacco products in all City of Hickory parks. That was option one. As you can see there, four, four Parks and Recreation Commission members voted for that for option one. Option two was a policy which would prohibit the use of tobacco products in all City of Hickory parks with the exception of the paved parking lot areas within those parks. As you can see, five, five commission members voted for for that option. And there were, there were three, three of our commission members that were that were not present at at that meeting. So with that recommendation, staff does recommend approval of the Parks and Recreation Commission's recommendation prohibiting the use of tobacco products in all City of Hickory parks with the exception of the paved parking lot areas within those parks. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
You mentioned it, but this is policy, Doc. This is not ordinance. So this is no public input.
It's a policy.
It's a policy. Now, what was the Parks and Recs thinking as to go policy versus ordinance? Did they discuss that?
Yes, sir, they did. They they looked at, they looked at both sides, both both sides of the story and basically from an enforcement standpoint, putting it in ordinance would do, would put undue burden on from staff. Basically, if there's an ordinance, I mean, that ordinance comes for council, then to enforce that would be, you know, Hickory Police Department would would enforce that, you know, with it being an ordinance, there would be fines involved. So enforcement would come down to the, basically to the police department and just felt with with the level of resources, did not want to take it to the level of an ordinance, felt that if it's a policy from the education standpoint, focusing on compliance, felt a policy was a better way to go than than an ordinance.
What will the sign say?
Basically, tobacco, if it's, if it's the option, policy won't just say all tobacco products prohibited in this park. If it's approved, they go with the recommendation of the commission. It would say tobacco products prohibited with the exception of the of the parking lots within the park. And then we, those parts, those signs would be placed in strategic locations throughout the park.
Is it legitimate to say that it's prohibited if we don't have an ordinance?
That's, I mean, my concern, I don't know.
Something like tobacco-free, I think.
Yeah, I think I think going tobacco-free is a different thing than than prohibiting.
I'd say, how about something, and incidentally, I did not sell any signs to the city, but how about something like, I want to incorporate the Parks and Recreation Commission and maybe NCD Council. This has been designated a tobacco-free area, except for the parking lot.
We should do that. We have not, we have not gotten to that detail on the sign and say, yes, sir, we can certainly word that sign, it's out of council, best feels it needs to be. We've not got, gone that, we've not gone that far.
And we appreciate your cooperation. I mean, something, something along those lines. I think that that becomes much more.
I think what you'll find is some parents will police that.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
You know, this, you know, you're not supposed to be smoking here, so why don't you go stand in the parking lot? Really concerned me there at the Zar Baker Playground, especially that flooring, for lack of a better word there, you know, cigarette butts and whatever melts that stuff. Haven't seen a lot of damage to it yet, but I mean, I've been over there a lot and I've smelled the smoke and others. I see some parents get irritable about it, so I think that will give them a little force behind, they're asking others to not use the tobacco.
I guess though, if we are really trying to promote a healthier lifestyle, then it's like we're saying we're halfway there. I would like to see it banned in the parking lots also, it would be smoke-free, be smoke-free on our properties.
You know, I'm, and I'm not, I'm not against going tobacco-free, but I'm sort of against a policy that says we're going to, you know, call law enforcement on you. They're not breaking any laws or ordinances by smoking, they're violating the policy. And so either I think we got to make that decision first, is this right to the level of ordinance? Even if it's a policy, then it's it's a matter of how you how you communicate.
I think the signs, the signs should be, and I'm, I know I'm talking about the signs, but that's going to be the physical evidence and that's what people are going to point to. They're not going to be carrying the ordinance around, they're going to be pointing to the sign. I think we can be direct enough that people get the message, but I don't want to be untrue. I don't want to say it's prohibited if you can't, if there's nothing to prohibit it, except, so I'd say, and I kind of like phasing into this, maybe you come back and tell us how it's gone and, you know, if we find out that the parking lots are a blooming mess all the time, we might look at that differently.
What kind of issues or problems are we having now, if any?
I was asked, I was asked that same question by by the Parks and Recreation Commission and in my, my 15 years as director, I've received, I've received two phone calls concerned about being allowed to, being allowed to smoke at basically the ballgame.
Does staff clean up a lot after smoking? I mean, is there evidence there? Is there, is there a problem with the litter?
No, it's just in our, in our normal cleaning of the parks.
But I mean, what kind of evidence is, I mean, are we seeing a lot of evidence?
We see, yes, sir, I mean, we see cigarette butts in the in the parks, yes, sir. We do see that.
And do we have a disposal system available at the parks?
We have, we have trash cans there. We don't, we don't have, we don't have the urns there, no, sir.
Not any specific.
No, sir.
See, I think, I think if we're going to do this in the parking lots, if that's the way we choose to go, that we need something specific to dispose of those butts instead of a trash can.
I agree.
Disinfecting, smoking air.
I mean, that may not even be one of them. If we're going to, if we're going to encourage or allow people to do it in one particular area, there needs to be a disposal facility, something, something there, which I have a tendency to agree with Ms. Patton about just if we're going to do this, just to do it park-wide. I mean, I think that that eliminates a lot of discrepancy and a lot of the, you know, well, I was, I was on the edge, I wasn't, I was, and a lot of that argumentative and that, you know, I don't know if that'd be an issue or not, but it seems that it could be.
Mayor, I'd like to move with approval of the recommendation as written on the wall.
I'll second that.
Now, for clarification, is that option one or option two? Is that allowed?
It's on the wall right now. That's with the parking lot areas.
With the exception of parking lots, okay. So option two.
Now, parking lot doesn't include paved surfaces that are walking trails, correct?
Or streets.
I mean, it's got to be a place where you can park a vehicle.
It's got to, yeah. It needs to be the parking lot area. We will have to define the parking lot areas at some of these places.
But some of these places have parking down into the park. I mean, you can park on the sides, correct?
Parking lots or parking?
Parking lots, but you, I guess Lynn Hilton, you can go down into the park and there's parking spaces along the walking trail and then down into the park near where the bridge area is.
The roadway has parking parallel and that would be considered perhaps, that's what I'm getting into. You know, different people are going to have different ideals of where the parking lot is and that's going to be argumentative.
And then there's parking down even further.
I don't think that'll be as argumentative as government once again saying, we're going to get into your business.
And that's why I'm going to vote against that motion. I'm okay with discussing it if we're going to do an ordinance and letting the votes go where they may, but I think that this is, I mean, having.
But we're not doing an ordinance, we're doing.
Policy for policy.
The motion's for policy.
We're going to have to define the area if they can smoke in.
What we're doing basically is asking people not to smoke in our parks, but if they, if they choose, I guess if they challenge it, that, you know, there's not a lot of substance there.
That's, that's my point.
I mean, that almost seems like, I mean, why would you want to do that?
Right, right. Well, I mean, you know, we can pass a resolution supportive of a healthy lifestyle, supportive of tobacco-free areas, we can create, you know, tobacco-free zones around any gathering spots or whatever.
We ask that you not smoke in our city.
We ask, I mean, I think that's fine to put up signs and not have the policy, but I'm, I'm very much against the policy that mentions law. I'm very much against the policy that mentions law enforcement and it's got all this description which tobacco products and all that.
Well, it doesn't mention law enforcement. I mean, in effect, that's the difference between a policy and an ordinance.
It does. It says law enforcement will be called, you'll be asked to leave the park.
Right, but you're not fined, you're not incarcerated, there's no, you know, other than please comply with the policy.
Okay.
Is that a Parks and Rec staff, or is that a parent, or does it rise to the level of a police officer saying, "You need to comply with the policy, go to the parking lot or leave the area"?
I think the police department have enough to do enforcing our.
Well, and I think, as Mr. McLeod said, that the Parks and Rec Commission's discussion was exactly that, that they felt like an ordinance does make you, you've got to enforce an ordinance, you've got to come out, you've got to police it, you've got to find people. If it's a policy, that's a lesser level to say. It is asking people to comply, requiring them to comply, but ultimately, if they choose not to comply, you know, I mean, it's a policy.
What happens when that law enforcement officer's called and that person just refuses to do it? Then where does that put the law enforcement officer?
Well, ultimately, again, you follow policy. It's just like in our gyms, for example, we have policies about how parents should act during an event. If they violate that and it breaks a law, then the law is enforcing them. If they're simply violating our policy, then you go through a procedural versus a criminal component, and you basically say, "You're banned from these games, you're banned from the facility, I mean, we do this at the library, we unfortunately have to do it at Parks and Rec from time to time with events and stuff." So in effect, the same thing happens with your policy. If someone is just obstinate about it and says, "We refuse to adhere to your policy," then the administrative component kicks in to say, "Well, we're going to have to ban you from the park," things like that. And Mr. McLeod, you can elaborate, you've done it for years.
Mr. Berry's absolutely correct, and those are discussions that the Parks and Recreation Commission had and staff had, and that's where it gets back to if it's a policy. The vision is that it will be self, compliance will be self-initiated versus staff-initiated. And Mr. Seaver, as you said, you know, parent being there, say, "Hey, you can't do that." I think one of the things with the option, the option that was approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission and recommended to council is due to with it being a policy and compliance is just, is the type thing, "Okay, you can't do it here in playground ballgame, but out in the park." If staff has to become involved in it, then staff will go and say, "Hey, you know, smoke is not allowed here, but it is in the park." The only time staff, the only time police department will be called is if staff asks that, if that person is just, does not, does refuse to do that, then they're asked to leave, leave the premises. If they do not leave the premises, then that's the only time that the police department will be called.
And I think policy is a good way to start. Now, if it continues, we can go to ordinance, but policy is a good way to start. Another question.
Who are we going to upset if we just say our policy is no smoking in any of our parks? I mean, it's just a policy, there's no smoking anywhere.
And that was considered, that's one of the options before you also.
See, I'm more in favor if we're going to do this than saying that we just don't do that, it's just park-wide, rather than park-on-the-. Because I think we're going to run into an issue there and just open ourselves up.
Yeah, they're going to stand a foot onto the asphalt away from the grass and have a cigarette.
Going, no smoking in the park is clear-cut.
Well, then they're just going to go out to the right of way. Well, they're going to go across the street in front of John Nelson's house.
Got a motion and a second.
Motion and the, the motion and the second was written up there. Any further discussion?
It didn't get a second?
It didn't get a second?
No, it did.
I made the motion, Mayor second. Pretty solid question.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The two ayes? All opposed, no?
No.
Okay, fine. So, are we going to have another question?
Make a motion for option one for total ban in the park.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Meisner, second by Mrs. Patton, all in, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no?
No.
I have to vote no on that, too.
Wright, Seaver, and Lael voting no. Okay. All right.
But that motion passed, right? And they announced that it passed.
Oh, yeah, four to three with Lael, Seaver, and Wright voting no. Next thing, Mr. Berry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At your last meeting, November 19th, Mayor Wright asked that staff provide an explanation for how the city manager's pay is determined. And in your agenda package is both a memo from me and also the employment agreement that I executed with the City of Hickory on August 2004, when I began my employment as the city manager. First, just kind of put it in context and some background. By law, I am an at-will employee of this body, so all the other 639 employees of the City of Hickory fall under the city's personnel ordinance and personnel policies. I don't, and that's by design across the state of North Carolina. So I'm an at-will contract employee of this body, which is very similar to county managers, very similar to school superintendents, that's a pretty common model for local governments in North Carolina. So to the specific question, my benefit package is actually determined in the contract, and again, the contract is in your agenda package, but I'll just pull out this specific piece of it. And when we put together the employment agreement in 2004, we mutually agreed that my package, my employment benefits should mirror those of the other 639 employees of the city. So I'm part of the local government retirement system, as with everybody else that works for the city. That's 6% is paid for by me, the employee, 7.07% is paid by the city. A few years ago, we implemented a citywide 401K match up to 1%, so I have the option of participating in that. We have a longstanding longevity program, which offers employees a one-time lump sum amount based on their years of service. In my employment agreement in 2004, city council agreed to recognize the 15 years of service I have in local government. You add to that the nine years I've been with the City of Hickory, and I qualify for $1,000 a year longevity. Again, that's exactly the same system that's used by all the other employees.
The prior service recognition is completely, virtually always adopted.
A monthly travel allowance, obviously, that's not something that all of the employees of the City of Hickory have, but it is a benefit that's provided to the assistant managers and department head that travels quite a bit. The vacation, sick leave, and holidays are all exactly on the same schedule as all the other employees. Health insurance, again, that's paid by the employer. If I opt to have my family on the plan, I pay for that, just like everybody else. I currently don't have my family on the city's plan. Dental insurance is paid by the employee, vision insurance by the employee, disability insurance by the employee, life insurance, dependent insurance. So we have, you know, a number of other benefits that are not paid for by the city that are available to the rest of the workforce, and so I have the opportunity, if I choose to, to participate in those. So that is the benefit package that stipulated in my employment agreement. If you look at the salary history, again, on August in 2004, the city council and myself agreed at a beginning rate of $135,000. In section six of the employment agreement, it states, "In addition, employer agrees to increase said base salary and/or benefits of employee by a minimum of the average across the board increase granted to other employees of employer on the basis of the results of performance evaluation conducted under provision of section seven of the agreement." So annually, I meet with city council in closed session, you all review my performance, and then based on that language, determine, again, within the scope of what we're doing citywide with the other employees, how much of a percentage increase will be granted to the city manager. So, whoops, so there you can see how that has played out from year to year. For two years, in 2009 and 2010, we didn't give any raises across the city, and you can see that was reflected. 4%, 2.9, I'm getting old, I can't see that, 3.74, two years, 00, then 2.24, 2.23, 1.76. So let me explain a little bit about how that averages is done. The performance evaluation process that the city uses with all of our employees has three categories. An employee can exceed the expectations of the supervisor and the organization, they can meet those expectations, or they cannot meet those expectations. And although this is adjusted every year in the budget, the percentages are adjusted, those three categories have remained the same. An employee who is not meeting expectations does not get a raise and usually has a document put together that shows the improvements that they need to make to continue employment with the city. Those who meet expectations are given an increase, and in 2013, that was plugged into the budget to be 1.5%. And those who exceeded expectations had a half percent more, which was 2.0%. So what takes place is, all of those are accumulated across the workforce, and that's where you end up with these averages of 1.76, 2.23, 2.34, et cetera. So that has been the history of my salary since my beginning employment of August of 2004, and I'll be happy to answer any of the questions that y'all may have.
Well, I don't have any questions, but I'd like to point out a few things. One, when employees are granted raises because of increased responsibility, that does not go into the calculation of the average rate.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I forgot that. Yeah, there are employees who receive raises generally in three other categories, and we've had a number of these over the last nine years. Reorganizations, you all know the changes that we've made to our staffing due to budget issues over the last several years, so we've had retirements, we've offered a retirement incentive package that's had people retire, and almost invariably, we've done reorganizations related to that, and oftentimes, employees will be given more responsibility, and we won't hire a certain position. And in that case, with the recommendation of our CFO and the Personnel Department, they'll say, "I think based on this person's additional responsibility, and it all fits within these criteria and categories, we recommend a 5% increase to that individual, et cetera." So those, there have been people who have been given raises that are outside of the annual performance evaluation related to that. I also, in the personnel policy, have the authority as the manager to give one-time increases to individuals who are doing exceptional work, and I have done that from time to time. And the third category, of course, is promotions. When a person is promoted to a higher-level position, they're going to move up to that higher pay plan, and they may get a 5% increase or whatever goes with that promotion. And those are not factored into this percentage, correct?
Well, I know, I got a lot of people, including many on this table, ask why I raise that question. I, we're not going to change the world in Hickory, North Carolina, but I have been offended by, first of all, I was offended by the alcoholic beverage control, where a man in the eastern part of the state, managing one store, was making $251,000 because the commissioners voted to let him have it, okay? And then I was offended by the preacher in Charlotte, who's, this has nothing to do with the city, but I'm going to call it other people's money. He's paid by other people's money, nonprofit organization, and his compensation is set by a board of mega-church pastors. His own church members do not know what he's paying. I found that offensive. Then I found offensive the gaming of the system that's gone on with some of the community college presidents, where they were getting paid for things that I don't believe are reported as compensation. I think a $48,000 a year housing allowance is compensation. If Mr. Berry were getting a housing allowance, we'd be reporting that as compensation. And then, in the last year or two of their contracts, that's converted to salary so they can bump their lifetime pensions up materially. So what that does is that they're either taking that money off of taxpayers, that bumped-up pension off of taxpayers, or they're taking it off from their fellow workers, and they're acting like that that was always salary. Well, if it was always salary, it reported that way. So what I said was, here, we have a manager who doesn't game the system, he doesn't ask us for crazy things, we have a council who has, in my opinion, put in place a reasonable contract, and we've stuck to it. Mr. Berry's evaluations are always exceeds expectations, and that is a legitimate, legitimate, heartfelt evaluation. But I think part of the problem with compensation is people who are doing the right things just don't stand up and talk about it. So I appreciate you all bearing with me as Mr. Berry, and I appreciate your candor in all of this, as Mr. Berry has explained how we do it in Hickory, and you have my word that if we pay Mr. Berry something that's outside of this, you'll know about it about as soon as anybody else does. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Thank you for indulging me, everyone. I'd like to appoint Ginger Bishop and Thomas McBrayer to the at-large positions on the Public Art Commission.
Say it.
And I'd like to nominate Jeff Bartlett for the at-large position on the Recycling Advisory Board.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Wright, seconds by Gess and Seaver, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Next, the Western Piedmont Council of Governments on the Policy Board. Our current delegate is Alderman Meisner, and he has served in that position for quite a while. He knows the inner workings. Alderwoman Patton is the current alternate. If they wish to serve again, I will make the motion that they continue those positions.
And if they don't wish to serve again, I'll make the motion that they can do. Just getting off second.
This is kind of like the rookie. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? That motion was by Wright, second by Lael, and that was unanimous. Any matters not on the agenda? General comments?
I have a comment. I just want to point out the article in the paper this week about the Carolina Cycle Challenge, and again, thank the City of Hickory, the Rotary Groups, and all of the businesses and people that supported us being able to get $100,000 for the building center. I mean, we did $50,000 and they matched 50, and that was a wonderful, wonderful day to have that check presented, and I hope that will continue to grow.
Anything else?
Say something about Lenoir-Ryan University on Saturday. Well, I don't speak, well, I know Alderman Meisner, maybe he can, you know, Lenoir-Ryan University's men's football team is in the NAIA playoffs. They are one team of eight vying for a national title. It's a big deal, they're playing North Alabama, which I understand has an undergraduate student population of 30,000. So they're in, they are banging heads against some big-time schools, so I think that playoff game is this weekend on Saturday. I'm not sure kickoff, do you know? Noon, noon, I know.
We're in the final eight.
Yes, final eight, that's correct.
That's big time. This is out of probably, I don't know, 500 or 600 institutions.
NCAA.
Huh?
NCAA.
The NCAA, yes.
Division two.
NCAA Division two, yeah.
That's correct, thank you.
I've attempted to give you a play-by-play, but I will tell you this, Mr. Pitts and I were there. Is anybody else at the game?
No.
Bruce was there, yeah. The second-string quarterback, who's led us so well for several games, was injured early in the second half. We were trailing 20. early in the second half, we were trailing 20 to 10. The third-string quarterback, who had almost quit, and the coach had talked him into staying because he said, we don't know when your number's gonna be called, but it never got called, until Saturday. We're trailing 20 to 10, he comes on, throws for a touchdown, runs for a touchdown, and we win the game 27 to 20.
He basically spurred the team by himself.
Well, he was unbelievable. You, you know, all of us were sitting back saying, uh-oh, first of all, he's a little guy. Our, our, the quarterback's a pretty big guy on that, the second-string quarterback. This guy gets out there, and he looks like typical high school quarterback, or smaller, okay? Anyway, it was a great time, and we are moving forward, thanks to Mr. Meisner, we're gonna make Hickory more of a college town. When people think Hickory, they think Lenore Ryan, when they think Lenore Ryan, they think Hickory. I have a license plate that has Lenore Ryan University on it, and I'm gonna go in, and at the top line, I'm gonna put Hickory, North Carolina on it. So we need to be moving forward, and, and I know Bruce has a great plan there. Okay, thank you, Mr. Lael. Any other comments? Motion to go into closed session.
I'll move to go to closed session.
Motion by Mr. Seaver, second by Mrs. Patton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Thank you all for being here.